Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the love of God, to the justice, to the liberation of our God, and to the goodness of our people.
Okay, Cheryl, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Phil Burton?
Yeah.
Dennis Gethen?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Laura O’Connell?
Here.
Neil Tillman?
Here.
Heidi Wendell is not here, and then Neil Zepplin.
Here. Thank you for that, Cheryl. So, welcome to the October 2023 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. I had two opening remarks. One, I may try to tell, if not jokes, at least try to bring a little levity to these meetings at times. But I am crying on the inside what’s happened around this planet. It is a dangerous time on this earth, and be hard-pressed if you put a microphone in front of someone who’s thoughtful these days to not comment on what’s happening in Israel. So I just note that without asking your political or other opinions, just to say, there is a lot of evil in this world. The second thing I wanted to say is that a lot of signs have been posted in our town recently to honor, or not honor, but to encourage people to vote. And I want to say there’s something special about our little town here that, to my right, can be a gentleman who’s running for office, and a guy on my front who’s running for office. And we’re of different parties, and we get along real well, work on important stuff together, and not a barrier between the two of them. So I thank you both for running for office and doing that important deed for this town. And I’m not going to vote for either of you guys, just because I don’t want to be torn. Anyway, all right, let’s...
We need people off to seats like that.
Yeah, well. Calling foul on that. Okay, so we have no minutes this month, am I right? Okay, fine. So, any correspondence? No? All right, let’s just jump to the Vasta application. I know we’ve received some correspondence from her attorney, and so I wouldn’t mind. Do they have to speak, Ron, or do you want to just kick it off?
Well, I think they should speak, just to represent the project.
All right, Ms. Vasta, or your team, you have the floor.
Amanda Vasta. I own nine Cliffside. I’m going to have my attorney, Mr. William Bronner, speak on my behalf.
Thank you. My name is Bill Bronner, and I am one of the people here supporting the application for a permit by Amanda Vasta. Also with me is her retained engineer and her retained surveyor, as well as her father. The...I’d like to talk about two things before I get into particulars, and they’re related. One is that there have been two letters written anonymously, impugning the character of Ms. Vasta. And the other is that I think I’m in a position to speak more than just as a lawyer on the fundamental question of honor. The critical question, or one of the critical questions on this application, is whether the town requirements for maintenance of a private right-of-way will be honored. Clearly, any applicant who has to make that kind of a commitment as a predicate for getting a permit will commit. This ties to the main claim of the anonymous letter writer, that my client is interested in flipping this or otherwise not proceeding as she has claimed to proceed. Mr. Vasta is her father, and I met him when he was in his teens, a high school guy helping his father build foundations as a mason contractor. And he helped with mine. His father was an Army, a Navy veteran. He served in the Korean War. And that father had nine children, seven boys and two girls. The oldest, Bobby Vasta, Amanda’s uncle, went to West Point and served in the Army for a number of years, retiring as a lieutenant colonel.
Sir, can I just interrupt you for a second? Let me just jump ahead of this for a moment, because I understand what you’re doing. We, as a board, I think I speak for all of us, do not appreciate anonymous letters. We do not accept them for having standing. There is a reason why, when someone comes before the microphone, we ask them to identify themselves. We don’t understand why someone would submit not one but two anonymous letters. I say to the public, whoever’s listening, that if there’s a person... whomever is the author of the letters would like to explain to us what the issues are, please come before us, or tell us who you are. But writing anonymously with relatively strong ad hominem attacks is not necessary or valuable or respected by this board. So you don’t need to give us character study of everyone and where they went to college, because that’s not relevant. And we...I trust us that we are not accepting that as being valuable input to this board. Does that help you?
It does.
Okay.
It cuts 10 minutes out of the...
Okay, good. There you go. I’m always about efficiency in my role. So I think we’re all kind of happy to avoid the CV.
As a lawyer, I can’t resist summing up what I was going to say.
Please feel free.
She has two uncles who...one that served in...was West Point graduate, the other an Air Force Academy graduate.
We don’t trust West Point graduates on this board. I’ll just tell you that, sir. They are deeply distrusting, yeah, not...
She has, I think, four first cousins who have either gone to West Point or Air Force Academy. They are honorable people. When she says that she will maintain this road, she’ll do it. The father, who lives in the area, has a shared interest in the family heavy equipment, and they’ve already put down 400 yards of millings. That’s substantial. And they rolled it, and they graded it, and they put the culverts in, and they got expressions of support as a result from almost everybody living in that area, with one obvious exception. The... Board is the first entity to pass on the biggest question, which is why a person should be allowed to build on a 1.2-acre lot when there is a 2-acre minimum. The anonymous letter writer says that my client missed the deadline by a couple of weeks. Clearly, the upzoning had not occurred when she negotiated to buy her property. Clearly, she wouldn’t have bought the property if she couldn’t build on it. She’s not in a position to speculate in land. She’s a teacher who worked hard to save the money to be able to buy it. And because she’s a teacher, she can get a combination construction and permanent mortgage loan to allow her to do the work. I understand that some of the details may still have to be worked out because everybody didn’t get the most recent filings. Those are, I think, more matters of detail than of substance. I submit that the applicant here, who wants to live here, who has her uncle, one of the many uncles, right down the street from her, whose son is not a service academy graduate. He’s presently at VMI, Virginia Military Institute. So they carry out the tradition. This is a good family that will be a credit to the neighborhood, who has already been endorsed by the people there, who has professionals in the family to make sure this building will be built perfectly and that no environmental damage will occur. I’m a former federal environmental prosecutor, and I know from a lifetime of working with them that they would not do anything to harm the physical characteristics of the site. I’m going to now defer to Mr. Kessel, the engineer, who can tell you what we are planning with regard to road improvements and how the building will be located on the site to answer any technical questions there may be.
Thank you. John Correll, engineer for this project, and been on this project for a while. You should know that we have Health Department approval for the septic system in Well. We have a driveway that is shown on the plans, and it meets the town standards for driveway slopes. So there’s really no reason to not approve this project. I mean, we know we need variances, and Mr. Gaynor has outlined a few of them. But we have to know what the next step is. Does this board send us to the zoning board for certain variances? Or do we just go directly to the zoning board? As far as...one of the comments was open development approval. Open development approval is normally done at the time of the subdivision, and it’s because they don’t have frontage. These lots do not have frontage on the town road. This open development approval should have been, or may have been, approved years ago when they created these lots. These lots were created. These people have maintained taxes on this lot as a buildable lot. And unfortunately, the regulations changed to go from two, or from one to two. And the owner has done significant improvements to the road, as our attorney indicated. And perhaps Mr. Vasta would want to identify exactly what improvements were made?
Again, at this point, you guys are citing a whole bunch of stuff. Can we...let me just get, if you don’t mind...
That’s fine, yeah.
I think we will stipulate that you guys have worked hard, and you’re good people. I don’t...no one is debating any of that, okay?
Okay.
We just don’t need to keep repeating it. You got it. We think you’re good guys, and we’re trying hard. No one’s assuming anything untoward.
We just want to move this thing along.
Yeah, so let’s just...Ron, could you take...catch us up where we are, please?
Sure, absolutely. As the board may recall, the applicant first appeared at the June meeting. Their lot happens to fall within a newly rezoned area that falls within the Upland Drive Ridge Road Development District. And that’s the issue at hand that the applicant’s trying to address. And there’s a learning curve involved in this, because it’s a new regulation. This is the first lot that has been impacted by these regulations. And it’s involved various discussions I’ve had with Steve Gabber’s office, just so we can be sure of the process. Because it’s in this new district, there’s various standards that have to first be applied. So we understand, we, the town, understand what variances or relief they need from existing code. With these discussions I’ve had with Steve as of today, to me, it’s very obvious that we need to meet offline with the applicant’s representatives, walk through the intent of the regulations, and get them to understand and provide the data that needs to be addressed so that this board can move this forward. The attorney is prepared to do that, and it just involves sitting down with the applicant and walking through the variety of regs that do pertain. In the attachment to my memorandum, which you received for tonight’s meeting, I’ve tried to outline the myriad of regs that become impacted by these new regulations. And it’s a matter for the applicant to walk through each of these, identify what standards are required, what standards they can’t comply with, and then seek relief for those specific areas that the board can then react to.
Okay, so in your opinion, Ron, is this ripe for the board to discuss? Or is there work to be done between you and the applicant to come back to us with something that we can actually assess?
The intent of tonight, in my view, was just to bring the board up to speed to understand the details that are necessary to move this project forward. The attorney is prepared to meet with the applicant’s representatives in my office. And I think in the intervening period between this meeting and next, we could give them clear guidance that they can re-present data that can be reacted to.
Without short-circuiting the litany of topics you’ve just raised, I would suggest I’ll take a show of nod or cross about whether people want to hear the itemized list of these things or would like to just defer to staff and the applicant to figure out what they need to do.
Like Ron and your people to sit down for...
Agreed. Anyone else disagree?
And Steve, didn’t Steve kind of...
Exactly. So with your deference, I think it’s just right for you guys to get together with the staff, Ron, and the attorney, to figure out what are the open issues and whether you can meet them. Because I don’t think we’re ready to have any action for you this evening as a board. So unless you feel...
We would appreciate me...
Obviously, we do that, and there’s other agenda items, so I don’t know if it’s not a problem.
You guys can work it out right now. If you need 30 seconds to just kibbitz about that, you have the floor.
Unfortunately, obviously, Mr. Gabber’s not here. I think if you reach for his office tomorrow and set up a time, I’ll make myself available for that meeting.
Adam, do you want to provide...Adam is his colleague.
Yeah, it’s easy enough. We will communicate with all concerned. We’ll get a date. We can do it via Zoom or in person, you know, whatever works best. And we’ll get a date expeditiously, so it’s well before the November meeting.
Good.
Could I call you tomorrow, or your office tomorrow at 10:00? That should...
That’s fine. That’s fine.
Do you have Steve’s number?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Barring anything else, we’ll just move on? All right, thanks, guys. Thank you. All right. Next, Hudson Island Reserve. On...we thought we were done. We’re back in. Thank you, Glenn, for coming. Give us no respite. Let us talk about setbacks, I think you wanted to cover.
Yeah, the...one of the conditions of the resolution and one of the requirements of the zoning is that you, as a board, set the setback requirements for the individual lots on the subdivision. I don’t recall that that was ever discussed during the approval and review process. So we wrote a letter seeking certain setbacks. Mr. Gaynor pointed out correctly that I had made an error in pulling off what the requirements were, and he’s made an alternate recommendation. While we’d like a little more freedom than he’s recommending, we would...we can live with that if the board so desires, and we would just seek your formal resolution setting the setbacks for the project.
Ron?
Yeah. As the applicant indicates, the portion of the regulations that pertain to conservation subdivisions in 17520 identifies the need for the planning board to set setback requirements for the individual lots being created. Conservation subdivisions have the ability to relieve lot areas and setback information, the bulk regulations. The board has seen this project for an eternity. What my memorandum in front of you tonight just tries to do is summarize the regulations that apply. Subdivision...the conservation subdivision regulations specify that setbacks be no less than what’s currently required in the Hamlet McZoning District. And I’ve summarized that in the letter. I’ve identified what actually is showing on the plans that you’ve been viewing for several years now. And I’ve identified what the applicant has requested. And as Glenn indicates, I’ve identified certain changes that are necessary. I think a 45-yard...a 45-foot minimum front yard, which is being requested by the applicant, is totally appropriate. And with respect to side yards and rear yards, they should be no less than 15 feet. Glenn has asked for 10-foot setbacks in each case. And in order to meet the requirements of the code and address what his requirements would be in the layout you currently have seen, 15 feet for a side yard and rear yard work appropriately. So I suggest the board set those numbers tonight so that they can move forward and finalize the construction plans for the project.
Glenn, why don’t you...obviously, Glenn, you’re suggesting something that’s materially different than what Ron is suggesting. You’re saying 10, not 15. That’s obviously a significant difference. Can you just give us your arguments why you wanted something south of the 15?
Just...we got fairly...you know, we got 1-acre lots. We don’t expect that that will be the case. But if we find a design opportunity, as we study each lot individually, it would just give us more freedom to work and maybe do a somewhat better job because we took advantage of that particular spot. And that was really my sense of...
You gave another sentence on what better would be. When you say better job, what does that...
Well, there’s a number of things. The driveway might work better. It might give a less obtrusive view from the street as people pass by. As I think, if we haven’t communicated anything else, I hope we’ve communicated that the applicant is prepared to spend a lot of effort and a lot of time on the individual homes, and he’s planning to construct them, design and construct them themselves with his team. So, you know, as carefully as we look for the last number of years, we might find, as we study an individual piece of property, an opportunity that that little extra freedom would give us.
And Ron, can you just give us the arguments for why it should be 15?
Well, again, the specific issue we’re referring to is side yards.
Right.
He’s asked for a rear yard of 10 feet, but that does not conform to the regulations. He has to use a 15-foot rear yard just to conform to the HM zoning district setback. With respect to 10 feet, the current layouts on plan, which, again, has been developed over an extended period of time, requires a minimum of 17 feet. He, again, has asked for 10. He’s permitted to ask for 10 based on the HM zone. But my expectation is that the effort that’s been expended to date didn’t illustrate any areas that warranted a very tight side yard setback. So I was basing my view based on how the existing subdivision is laid out currently.
So let me just recap for the board, then we can get to questions. Your recommendation, Ron, is that 45-foot front, 15 side, 15 rear. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then...but...and you, Glenn, are asking for 45, 10, and 10?
Well, the mistake that I said I may refer to, the 50... I recognize that the 10 is...and the rear is not available.
The side you want 10, and Ron is saying 15. Okay. Board members’ questions?
I don’t have a question, but I have a comment. Just living on a small lot myself, that makes a big difference when you’re trying to design something or use your own property. So, just my opinion.
You’re inclined to support a 10-foot side...
I could see where it could come into play regarding a design issue.
Okay.
I would support, yes.
Okay. Other people’s comments?
How is this...how is it that this is the first time we’re considering this? We’re pretty far along on this application, Glenn. Why we haven’t...why is it coming up now?
Well, it was a condition of the resolution. It was never really addressed in terms of your review. And whether we overlooked it or whether you overlooked it, I really don’t know. But it’s...obviously, AKRF and Mr. Gaynor didn’t overlook it, so they put it into the resolution. We’re seeking it now because we can’t really move forward until we know what those numbers are.
I can add, it was discussed in the EIS draft and final. It was in there that this is something that had to come out of the process as part of subdivision approval, not necessarily part of SEACER. But it was mentioned a couple of times in there that the zoning regs require this to be set by the planning board. So it wasn’t something that you’ve met...maybe you just missed it as reading it, but it was definitely part of the record.
Regardless of whether we talked about it, didn’t talk about it, we got to talk about it.
Yeah.
So we’re talking. Other...keep going. Any other questions?
No, no.
Other thoughts?
We’ll keep going.
Questions?
So, I guess my question is, say we accept it, are we...does it change our precedence?
Excellent question. Ron, or Adam?
Didn’t hear you.
Precedent. Setting a precedent of having...of giving effectively a 33% reduction in the setback because we were asked to.
Yeah, I mean, we’re not in the business of making changes here.
It doesn’t necessarily set a precedent that binds us to the extent that, you know, each property, each layout is unique and has its own personality, topography, et cetera. So it wouldn’t legally bind the board the next time. So I don’t have...see a big concern with that. So it’s really up to the board to consider the request in light of Glenn’s recommendations.
Well, let me...why don’t we go one further step, Adam, in that answer? Which is, it may not be a legal obligation, but there must be a criteria in your head about... There must be a criteria in your head to advise us about, under what circumstances should we give such a 33% variance, if you will? Like, why would we do that?
Well, if it would... Again, it would be a balancing test. The benefit to the applicant by the reduction compared with the minimum set forth by the code, whether it would have any detrimental impacts on the development itself, on the community, the neighborhood, it’s essentially a balancing test.
So I’ll ask one further question on your behalf, which is, so what if we set it at 15, and Mr. Watson or his client wanted to come back to us like, “Oh, Lot 21, you know, we really just can’t force it in 15. We need 12 in that one.” Would we have the ability to waive it on an individual property basis as opposed to making it the entire plan?
I believe you could. I mean, if there was some reason to do it, as long as it’s not going below what the minimum requirements of the code are.
Other thoughts? No one?
So there’s not an undue...standard of undue hardship? I mean, what are we looking...what are we looking for? I don’t like the idea of making these judgment calls on the fly when it comes to codes. I kind of feel like I don’t know enough about this. And again, there’s always the element of precedent. I can see...I don’t want to be in...I don’t want to be in the business of putting in custom setbacks for every new construction. So help me out here.
This is the conservation subdivision piece of your zoning code. It doesn’t apply to every subdivision. The conservation subdivision regulations have this in it to allow the planning board to set the yard requirements. So that’s part of your job in the...it’s part of the review of a conservation subdivision. This is the first one that you’ve seen since that code amendment was made.
Okay.
So it’s not a universal thing across the town that you’re going to be doing this on. And if they...my opinion, you guys can weigh in more, but each individual lot’s going to have to go through the building department for construction of a home. There’s set floor area requirements that are part of their... they’re going to be part of their HOA requirements and design standards. And if they can’t meet a setback, they would need to go to the ZBA individually to try to get that relief. That’s my take on it.
I think you’re actually good. Correct. I don’t think that you could vary once you set them, because there is a requirement that they be posted on the plat, which is what we were in the middle of drawing. When we don’t always box out the setbacks, you know, literally. So we’re putting a requirement on the plat. So I think it would be...I think you’re correct. Once that’s set, we would have to get a variance. I...any little bit would, in my view, help a little bit. We, you know, we’re...frankly, we’re prepared reluctantly to accept Mr. Gaynor’s recommendation, but you might consider a foot or so, just...may go to 12 feet or something. But frankly, I’m more concerned about getting this...these set.
Yeah, so any other questions, thoughts? Ron, one more time, please, on where the 15, 15 comes from?
Sure. As I said, the subdivision plans have existed for a very long time. The current layout doesn’t require any setback...side yard setback smaller than 17 feet. And there’s very few lots that even approach that limited number. I felt it would be appropriate to give some relief and bring it to 15 feet. And that was my view on what the board should... Um, and that was my view on, on what the board should consider.
All right. Well, look, I'm gonna just start with Ron's recommendation, cause I don't know how to vote on whichever one, cause it's not like we have a motion, but I'd like thoughts on 15. Hands please. All right. One, two, three.
No 15.
Four. Okay, that's the majority. So anyone for 10 of the shorter setbacks or 12 is Glenn asked for? No one? Peter, you, you want zero? No setbacks?
Yeah, I, I just feel there's, this is, it's a sense of creep going on with this, uh, conservation subdivision and, uh, more things are kind of being given up. Um, and I just don't want to get up another thing.
Well, I'm conscious that you were one of their two votes against the, uh, the project in, in particular, so I apologize for putting you on the spot. So I think we have a motion at table to set the setbacks at 15, at 45, 15 and 15 as per your recommendation, Ron. Uh, we appreciate Glenn, you raising and advocating vigorously for your client.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I, I'm gonna make a motion. So we're gonna, we're gonna accept it 45, 15 and 15 as your setbacks. Send a motion to that effect, please.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second?
I'll second.
All right, Neil, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Oh, opposed. You want no setbacks?
I'd like to keep it at 17, 16.
I mean, if that's what the code is saying, you know, so far, I just don't want to have
it there.
All right, understood. Okay. Here? Well said, well said. As I've said before, a, a board that is unanimous all the time is not an effective body, so thank you, sir. All right. Motion, one absent, one, uh, one no. Motion passes. Thank you, Glenn. Uh, okay. Next order of business is Shakespeare. And tonight, we're here to, uh, decide whether to accept the FEIS final, final environmental impact statement. Um, you want to say anything?
Uh, it sort of depends on whether Aaron's gonna run through the, the highlights of the AKRF memo if not.
Well, why would we do that then? I mean, don't, don't feel obliged to say hi. Um, hi, good haircut. Uh, Aaron, you wanna give us a summary of where we are? I mean, I think we all have your memo saying you find it as, as acceptable at this point.
Yeah, so Ron and I did another, our second review of the revised FEIS. Um, all our comments have been addressed, the editorial comments, um, other clarifications we asked for. The two main issues that we discussed last time, um, were the protocols for, for noise and water withdrawal complaints. Um, the applicants come back with a new proposal for that mitigation measure that they're willing to commit to and willing to have as a condition of any approval. Um, they've asked, they're, they're proposing, uh, three years for the, for the water, um, protocol, and they also are willing to submit, uh, water usage reports to the town on a quarterly basis while they're operating. Um, I think that's, you know, Ron and I discussed that. I think that's a fair proposal, considering that they did, the projections in the environmental review were pretty conservative for water usage. Um, and you'll have a, a chance to see what they're actually using compared to what they predicted they would use in the study and they'll, as far, and they're also, they did that 72-hour pump test where they, um, you know, they, they didn't have any impacts within 1,000 feet, um, of those that participated in that study. So, you know, they're asking, they're, they're adding one more year to the protocol, um, and this would come after their certificate of occupancy on phase one, which is the, you know, the main theater, the back of house structure, the concessions, the restrooms, the bulk of the high demand components of the project. Um, so that's the water. And on the noise, I believe they increased it to five years.
Again, for the public's benefit as well as the board. Just reminds when you say it for five years, just restate exactly what that protocol is.
They increased the, uh, they're proposing to, they're willing to do a protocol, um, uh, for noise complaints received from any neighbors during operations. Um, for, originally, they came in with doing that for two years, um, after the certificate of occupancy on phase one. Um, after the board discussed, they didn't think that was enough time, so they've come back with proposing five years for that. In which case, during that five-year period, any complaints that are received, the applicant would, would be, would front the cost for investigating, um, the noise levels that are being complained about and would work with the town and, and the plaintiffs to remedy the situation. Um, I think beyond that five years, they are asking that they wouldn't necessarily be on the hook any longer, but then again, you know, that's a pretty good sample size, Ron and I believe, for, um, you know, for, for these kind of things. And, um, they can, they have the opportunity to present to, to the town if there's anything different that might be causing more noise after that five years, which they've said there wouldn't be, but, you know, we'll have to see.
Adam Sollard from Sci-Pedigree, Zell, on behalf of the applicant. So just to, just to add to that, um, on the water, um, it's three years with quarterly reports ongoing, cause the applicant's gonna be monitoring their water use daily. But there is also, um, at the completion of 50% of the artist housing, an opportunity to sit down with the town and discuss whether there should be another round of the protocol after that housing is built. So there's like a potential second phase of monitoring. And then on the noise code, I just wanted to add that after the five years, the applicant will still be, um, will still, you know, have to comply with the town noise code. So it would just be that any complaints would not be, um, the investigation of those complaints would not be on the applicant's dollar, but would rather be, um, either on the complainant or the town, whoever wanted to, you know, measure that sound.
Okay. Any other things, Aaron?
Yeah, just again, the, the noise code that, for the town has limits at the property line. So that's the issue at hand is if there's a complaint that they, a neighbor thinks that they're exceeding the, the decibel level that's required by the code at the property line, that's what's investigated during that protocol period. Um, you know, right now, we've heard, obviously during the two performance seasons, that there's been some concerns. Um, we haven't seen, uh, data from any, any of those complaints to know what, what is actually happening at the property line. And plus, you know, with the new project, um, the location of, the source of the noise is gonna be in a different place and it's gonna be, uh, you know, a, a building that's going to be designed to help remediate that issue from the source. So.
I got me started, thanks. Any else? Aaron?
I think, yeah, that's, that's, that's it on those two issues. So I think, you know, Ron and I were, were willing to, um, recommend that this be accepted as a complete FEIS at this point. If you all agree with that, the next step would be most likely, um, directing me to prepare a finding statement for the November meeting, and I can talk about what that is if you're, when we get to that point.
Okay. Uh, why don't we take any comments from board members on the FEIS? In the last meeting, I said that you guys had a month to do some more homework. We had a month to do more homework and/or read things and as we've heard before, and I'll let Adam comment if he'd like, uh, we understand the FEIS, while it's, we're accepting it, meaning it is, uh, we're not done with it. It actually is in some ways our pers, it is, we adopt it as our perspective at that point. So it is, while it's been written for us, it is actually of us at that point. And be hard to refute what we had already approved, if you will, or said. So what stands in it is what we're gonna say on this FEIS if we accept it, um, which we learned a lot, we learned that lesson with Hudson Highlands Reserve. So I'll open the floor to questions or comments about what's in the FEIS. Again, I'm not gonna call on anyone, not gonna put you on the spot, but anyone got anything? Nothing? New board member, Joe, you got anything for us? I'll call on you. You don't have to, it's okay if you don't.
No, I think the, the noise and the, the water issue seems to be addressed, uh, with the extension of the, uh, complaint timeframe, plus inspections by the town. If there is a complaint in the future, they'll be done on the property line by the, by the, by the town. So, yeah, no, I, I think it's been adequately addressed.
Anyone else?
I, I'm not, I guess my, my feeling is that I'm, I'm, I'm not feeling that the applicant has, uh, I'm not, I'm not happy with the remedy of this noise complaint. So you've had two seasons with, with a, with a, with a, with a temporary permit under parade permit, actually, that you, um, that you wanted. You wanted to have those, you, you wanted to keep, I understand, you wanted to keep Shakespeare going, you didn't want to lose momentum, and you had your two years up on the ridge. Unfortunately, what we've learned, and we talked about this last time, is that we're having some, a lot of noise complaints. And the remedy seems to be that you're, we're gonna monitor it for a couple of years. And we said last time to me, that sounds like you're kind of waiting out the clock and then it be, then it, and he, we're sort of just assuming that it's gonna be loud and that people are gonna hear it and that they're gonna have to almost get used to it. Where, what I haven't heard for the remedy of the noise issue is either, do you, do you move the building or do you enclose the building? It seems to me, I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable signing off on this when we haven't had that conversation because it's somewhat apparent, it's apparent to me that, that, that may be a conversation that we need to, you know, we need to open up because you've had your two seasons up there and people have gotten a taste of what they're in for. And I think that that might warrant going back to, you know, some threshold questions about, I, I'm feeling like I don't, you can't have it both ways. I don't think you can be up on the ridge in an open building and not expect to have just this new noise all summer. So I'm, I kind of feel like I want to back up and have a, have a, let's take a look at this. And with a broad brush, I would say that I would, I, I would like that to be the conversation. Do you, I, I don't see you having it both ways, or me being able to support this without at least having that discussion.
So the noise modeling for the new building design and location shows that the performances as, as they have been at that new location with a new design will be well within the town's noise code at the property line, which is how it's measured. So the way that the performance has gone over the last two seasons, um, is not indicative of the new design, which is represented by the modeling. And, uh, it may be that the noise is different. I mean, that's what the modeling says when, when the new design is, is put in place, but that's all been studied by our noise experts and, and put in the, in the EIS. Now, in terms of what happens if, you know, the new building, um, is up, or frankly, even before the new building is up next year, when they're back in the temporary tent again while the new building's being constructed, um, if there are noise complaints, um, you know, the remedy is to measure at the property line, see what's going on. And if there is an exceedance, um, to work with the applicant and the neighbors to figure out, you know, if they're, you know, what can be put in place. One thing, um, is, you know, making sure that the soundboard is set in such a way that the amplification from the events is, is reduced and seeing what can be done immediately. Or is it potentially a problem when there's like a wedding on the same night as a, um, as a performance? And so, you know, each performance is gonna be different, it's gonna have a different sound design, and it may be through this process of monitoring that the applicant has to work together with the community to figure out what can be done, um, if, you know, if there are complaints.
Asked and answered.
Neil, can I add one thing?
Sure.
Um, in a lot of ways, I feel that, this is my opinion, but, you know, with the two performance summers that we've had, um, there was a lot of baseline data that was very useful to do this EIS, particularly from the 2022 season. The noise might be a situation where it's just a difficult, uh, way to, to look at this because you have a tensile structure in a different location, lower elevation, up against Route 9, no acoustical barriers, um, whereas the project's gonna have a completely different design, an acoustically rated building that's lead platinum, that's gonna have sound attenuating features, gonna have a lot of landscaping around it. So while we were able to get data for what level of sound comes from a performance, um, you know, we weren't able to replicate what this project's going to do, but they modeled it with computer software that's.
I'm familiar with that.
Right. So that's, that's the issue. That's the tough, I understand why it's a difficult decision.
That's all right. And modeling, modeling is, 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 I understand it's a science, it's also somewhat speculative. What's not are the complaints that we got all summer. And I know we can talk about moving things and different design and a different acoustical profile and this and that, but we had, we had complaints all summer. And I, I, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not comfortable signing off on this until we go back and have a real conversation about what we're doing. Once we make the approval, it's gone. And I'm not gonna go up there and start playing with soundboards. And I know, I know Greg Warner isn't gonna want to either. And we'll have a million conversations about how to mitigate this after you're in and after you're up and running, when maybe there's a conversation to be had now. I know you want your open theater at the top of the ridge, but I don't see how we're gonna have that and not be blasting, okay, I don't want to exaggerate, not blasting, but would, was, there'll be projections out over garrison. It's, it's a theater. They're there to project. They're there to be heard.
So from a SEACR, from a SEACR perspective, just want to note two things. And one is that it was raised during the scoping period, should there be modeling or should there be testing where you put big speakers out in the field at the location of the new theater and test it that way? And it was determined in the scoping process that the board was not going to require the use of speakers because modeling is a better fit for this project. So in terms of retesting something, that's not, it's not really, we're past the point in SEACR where that can be done. And the results of the EIS show that there's not gonna be an impact through the modeling, which was part of the scope. And the same with the location of the theater. That was not a, you know, that could have been an alternative, that could have been put in the EIS process at the outset from the scoping process, and it was not one of the alternatives that we were required to study. And from a SEACR perspective, you know, advocating for the applicant, we are past the point where we can decide to move the theater because it would require a whole new study that could have been part of the scope and wasn't.
Any else? Any else? Others? Peter?
I mean, it's both in, uh, study and testing, and there's also in the code, uh, clear decibel rating. And if you go over that, you gotta go on to it.
Correct.
And so it's a, and if you've got this five-year period of testing, it seems to me that that's a, uh, that's a pretty, uh, a pretty good period of time for us to, uh, to be able to figure that out, whether or not that'll, you know, to mitigate it if it becomes a problem. I mean, we've, uh, not to go back, but to go back, uh, you know, in the, uh, the Hudson Highland Reserve, we made a lot of, uh, you know, changes there. It was supposed to be clustered, wasn't clustered. Was, you know, it was supposed to, uh, stay away from the, you know, subjectively, you know, the most aesthetically pleasing and it, you know, pretty much clustered around that too. So, um, this seems like, you know, a pretty small, uh, leeway being given in terms of sound to me.
Others? Joe?
Yeah, one more question. Um, is, will there be a timeline for when you get a noise complaint to when you can mitigate the noise complaint? Is there gonna be some kind of timeframe when it will be resolved or?
I'm not, I, I think that we have language in there and, and maybe, um, Jan can help on this, um, about responding quickly, but I thi, I think that that's in there. And if it's not in there, you know, I don't know if we want to set, you know, a time by which the noise monitors will be out there doing their thing, but maybe that's the way to, to do that and be happy to, to put that in there.
Good. Joe, more?
Um, no, that's it. That's fine. Thank you.
Others? Please.
Um, so just a couple of questions. So one is the data that we have from this past summer, the noise data that we have is well within code. Yes?
We have not taken measurements from the property line during this summer's performances. We did during the previous summer's performances, which had similarly amplified music.
And it's well, and it's within?
Yes.
Code. Okay. Um, uh, I'm gonna argue a little with you, Neil, because I think we are comparing apples to oranges. I think we're talking about two different locations on where the tent is gonna be located. I do believe that a tensile structure versus what they're proposing. I do believe that a tensile structure versus what they're proposing, which is more of a permanent structure, there are acoustical design level characteristics that they're going to be implementing. With that being said, you know, if their models are based upon the, the design location and the amplification that they're going to do, and it's well within that reason, then I, you know, I don't see what more we can do. I think what they're offering is to monitor and manage and, you know, if we can address it with burns and things of that nature after the fact, I think that that's acceptable. The other thing too is just a question, and this I don't know, if they come forth for phase two, do they have to go through another process or do they just roll in with like their phase two design work?
So I think I can answer that. The seeker process is, is taking a look at their full master plan for the property. So all phases, a 15-year, some odd build out. This is what they need to be able to go to the town board to get their zoning request changed for the Garrison Golf Club Plan Development District. They have to get that zoning amendment to allow this use on the property. Following that zoning approval, they'll be able to come back to the planning board for specific site plan reviews on the phasing. And also they need a subdivision, I believe, too, as part of that process from the planning board, so they can separate out Chris Davis's lot from the rest of it, among other things. So there's not going to be another environmental review per se, but there's going to be a chance for you to look at site plans and use the finding statement, if we get a positive finding statement, to reference the conditions, the mitigation measures, the commitments they made in the seeker process to be implemented on the site plan as conditions by this board.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? No?
Could I ask a question?
Oh, but yeah, please, of course, our, why don't you take the mic here?
Well, I hope you need a microphone, but...
No, they need a microphone. It's not, it's not for us.
For the record.
No, it's for the public that wants to see their elected official do his, do his magic.
After the five-year period, okay, would it be possible for you to supply the tools to the town that we would need to do the monitoring after a complaint? That's all I'm asking. I mean, you must have tools that you go up there to use. We don't have enough money to go buy stuff like that. And we're going to be the people monitoring that. I think we need the tools to do it. That's all. Just a question, you have to answer me now, but it's something that's, look into, that's all I'm asking. That's all.
I think you're going to get an answer now.
I should point out that the applicant doesn't have those tools either. We hired a company to come out from Chicago and do that. They are not going to be the ones responding to the complaints. We're not going to fly people out from Chicago when we get noise complaints.
Should they go to New York too?
I think that the intention is for HVSF to get its own noise recording equipment. And I don't see why at the end of the five-year period that couldn't be donated to the town. But it's something I can talk about with our client.
Thank you. I have a couple for you. I have actually three for you. The first, and these are variations of a theme from my colleagues, that's how smart this board is, they've already gotten ahead of it. So Joe, Joe was highlighting one issue, or I wouldn't say it's an issue, it's more of a design question. I'd like a lot more specificity about this complaint process. I'd like to know how you're going to market it. I want to know how people are going to find it. I want to know how it's going to meet. I want to know what the results will be back to the person who complains. I want to know how this board or whomever, whatever boards and government in this town get aware of it. Because I, I have an experience in this town with a particular not-for-profit that owns a particular building. This building is, for them to get their tax status, is required to be open to the public. Once a year, this person puts an ad in about this big in the newspaper and about font two and says it's open on October 4th from 6:00 PM to 6:10 PM, and that they never get any traffic, of course, because no one ever sees this listing. And this person, of course, checks the box on that governmental requirement. I would like to make sure this is well documented because I can imagine without any untoward behavior, there'd be no real way of figuring, what's the number? There's no number. There's an email. Where's the email go? We don't know. And that becomes a level of frustration and I don't want to create that. I'm not, again, suggesting you would do that, but I think we need some specificity about how we're going to staff this thing or the process because it is a fairly important part of this board's responsibility to make sure there is some process. I really appreciate you guys raising the solution. I want some more specificity. The second is, and that's again, the whole, from soup to nuts, as we used to say when we were kids, how a bill becomes a law. I'd like to see the process by which you're going to have this monitoring work. And that may be over engineering well ahead of something that hasn't happened yet, but I think it's valuable. The second is on the water side, and that's for both of your complaint processes. On the water side, I'd like to better understand the 1,200-foot radius. And I raise that because I understand it was what you did in your testing and used the thousands, you made it bigger. It was 1,200 or 1,500? 1,500, sorry, apologies, 1,500. But we also heard a number of things, and I'm not overweighting this commentary because it wasn't, wasn't fact-based, but we heard in past eras of the golf course, there were homes beyond the physical 12 or 1,500 feet of the well where people said, said they experienced water shortages. So I'm just trying to understand why 1,500, doesn't sound like, in our town with large properties, that doesn't sound like a huge distance. That sounds like basically a house adjoining the well and not a couple of houses down the street or further up. So I'm just concerned about the volume of commentary we had on water, seems in conflict a bit with that small distance. And the third piece, and my, my colleague raised the issue around the current noise. I am deeply sympathetic, and we have one of the, the neighbors adjoining you, I'm deeply sympathetic not only to the future operation, but the present operation. And so while I don't consider a requirement of this approval for a future project, I do think it'd be really great for you guys to think about how we can create some monitoring while you're in the alternate, the temporary location, literal monitoring, not modeling, with equipment that maybe we have to go to Chicago to borrow, I don't know. I'm sure here in the great state of New York, we have this equipment available too. But I think some monitoring and some interaction on a more formal basis with neighbors like the gentleman here who lives on Snake Hill Road, to ensure that there's good friendship among neighbors because I just know that it's an issue. Now, it is an issue because Garrison is dead quiet and you are below what we believe to be the town standards, but the town standard wasn't necessarily tied to the most rural part of Garrison where there was a golf course before and dead silence at night. It was meant to be probably a slightly more volumed area. So I'd like you to consider that as a piece because I think that would make harmony among neighbors in a way that maybe, may not exist as much as it could be. So those are my three comments. Feel free to address any of those.
So, I mean, my, you know, chief concern is that we try and get on to a finding statement next month if possible. So I, you know, anything that we can do to hash this out either now or with staff and then, you know, to put into the finding statement in the next couple of weeks, we're open to doing. I just, my concern is keeping the process moving. We're happy to, I think that everything you, you raised is sensible, we can, and things that we can work with.
I'm sure you can draft in the first point, a proposed process for how that would work. I'm sure that's not hard staff work.
The, the issue with the water radius just becomes that you get a lot more homes as you, you know, it's a radius, so it's not just in one direction.
Correct.
And you get a lot more properties that are, from our hydrologist's point of view, beyond 15 feet and you get, it starts to get questionable about whether there's any sort of hydrogeological connection between 2,000 feet away and the, and the wells. But I, I think that in terms of having some monitoring on the noise next season, you know, at the property line, that makes sense.
I, I'm obviously not a hydrologist either, but I know that 1,500 feet is not that far with our home sizes here. And so my worry is that we're only covering effectively the adjacent homes to the well and not what it would be at least one behind. Please, Jan.
I just wanted to point out that in the FEIS, I think the reason, first, the thousand feet covered the wells that showed influence during the pump test. So we took that thousand feet. Nobody beyond that thousand feet showed influence. We expanded it to 1,500 feet because there was some prior testing that was done many years ago that showed some influence beyond the, beyond the thousand feet within the 1,500-foot radius. So the 1,500-foot radius takes into account wells that showed influence during our 72-hour pump test and wells that showed influence during prior pump tests several years ago before the action.
Then from one layman's perspective to an expert, I would suggest to you that 2,000 feet then may get to a place where maybe there's no one touching it and maybe that's actually a good thing. Because if we're including those who are unaffected in both your examples, maybe then we actually feel like we've hit the point where we don't have to worry. I would like to see a wider radius just because I can understand the purpose of this. This will be the greatest water usage and this is going to be more than it was before and we know what's happened in the environment since those historic incidents. Things have degraded in our water aquifers. So I don't know, that's, that's my one man's perspective. You want to take it back to your hydrologist and find out if that's an undue burden, that would be perfectly fine to us? And I appreciate you wanting for speed, but this is a, this is the, this is our second project of this size and it's the biggest one ever in this town. So I think none of us are going to lose sleep if it pushes a month, to be frank with you.
You know, subject to anything else we hear from the hydrologist, I, I think we would prefer to keep this moving and we can accept 2,000 feet. And if there's, if there's an issue, then we'll, then we won't be back, you know, like...
I'm a layman, right, we have a couple of very talented engineer types on this board, but I am, so I'll defer to the experts, but I feel like that is in the best interest of the neighbors and the community.
Okay.
Any related comments on my proposal, folks?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah?
Yeah, a good approach.
Guys are a bunch of yes men.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. So can that be, can that be considered as something that we decided tonight, that at 2,000 square feet is going to be part of the FEIS?
I mean, is that not the case, Aaron? If we make these verbal remarks, if we, if they agree to provide you in the near, in the next couple of weeks, a detailed process, they make it 2,000?
Yeah, so what, you could accept it, you could accept this complete subject to working out these details on, I mean, adding 2,000 feet as the radius for water, getting more specificity on the process. I think, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to this, but what's in the FEIS right now, there's, you know, a five-point, half a page long process for how they're going to do the noise testing and how they're going to receive complaints, who's going to go out, what performance was it, they're going to look into what date it was and all, like, it's pretty detailed. I don't know if you had comments specific to that list.
I particularly want to know the marketing plan of how this number, number, email, is it going to be a website people are going to log into? Are they going to, how is that? I want to know how that's going to work. I wonder how they're going to interact, which boards, which ways, how are we going to hear this? I'm just...
Could beef it up a little bit to add that?
Yeah, call whatever you want. Take the top topics I've raised and if others have anything else they'd like to see more detailed, but I am just, I gave my example of what I'm concerned about.
Sure. So yeah, definitely, to answer your question, you can make, you know, you can accept the document as complete, subject to changes discussed tonight. You can list them out. You know, we can work with them to get that FEIS updated to, to the point that we are comfortable with it, we could share it with you first, but, you know, it does need to also get filed and distributed to the interested involved agencies if you do accept it as complete, so.
Will you have enough time?
Well, we would have to probably think about an extension of time with the applicant if that's how we want to do it, this, this way.
I think we need an extension anyway, right? Because I think the 19th is valid, but...
Yeah.
But aren't these things that could go in the finding statement? I mean, we can make the changes to the FEIS, but it's, I think the timeframe that we're concerned about is the 10 days between the exception as complete, acceptance of the FEIS as complete and the finding statement, right? There's a...
Minimum 10 days.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can go, I think you can go 30 or more, like, you can make a request for whatever works to get to the finding statement, but I don't know if I would be comfortable with the finding statement saying something different than adopted FEIS does, so, you know, I think we would need to figure out what is going into the FEIS response to comments section, which talks, which lays out these protocols, both water and noise.
I, I think everything that's in here, you know, the issues that we've raised, we can turn around, revise FEIS addressing these issues to you early next week and...
Okay. And if I was to share that with the board for a review for comfort?
Here's what I'd ask you. I'd ask you on the behalf of this board, why don't you share what has changed in the FEIS as opposed to sending us the new full document? I guess that's more manageable because we, we picked only a couple of very narrow...
Red light pages.
Yeah.
Strike-throughs, double underlines for new stuff.
Correct.
I think that's reasonable.
Good with that?
Yes.
So I guess the motion I'm asking for, Adam, are you okay with that?
Yeah. Acceptance subject to comments.
Okay, so can I have a motion then to accept the final environmental impact statement with the caveats that it must reflect changes as per our conversation for, A, a greater detailed sense of the process for complaints for both noise and water, and secondly, an extension to 2,000 feet for the water monitoring? I'll leave, I don't think we need to put in the FEIS the topic of interim monitoring of noise. I don't think that's an FEIS topic. It feels like that's something you're going to agree to do as a matter of a good neighbor.
Okay, great.
Yeah? So all, can I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second, second Dennis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition, abstention, motion passes. Okay. Thank you for your accommodation. Thanks for the conversation. Okay, next up, RKB Materials on Horseman's Trail.
Jason Snyder with Badian Watson, representing the applicant, RKB Materials. As instructed by the board at last month's meeting, we've prepared a statement of use, which was submitted to the building inspector, wherein he has responded, he has addressed the, our, our statement of use and has accepted it and has prepared a, he prepared a brief email, which was submitted to Ron Gaynor, and seems to be acceptable and understandable with regard to the board's request. So at this point, I think we would like to proceed with the, with the referrals as well as scheduling the, the site visit, which would be the goal of tonight's meeting.
Ron?
The applicant was obviously before you at the prior meeting and has now accomplished the directive of the board to meet with the code enforcement officer. You had a detailed technical review from my office at their original appearance and it's, it's, if the board so deems it, you may now move forward with actually processing the application itself. That starts with identifying the application as a major site plan. An EAF was previously submitted. You want to declare it an unlisted action and determine whether to have a coordinated or uncoordinated environmental review. Most times for these types of projects, you have an uncoordinated review, but that's for your decision to make. And then you can direct the secretary to make necessary referrals upon receipt of a revised EAF to address the original comments I had raised.
Appurals to fire?
Yeah. County planning, county health department, town conservation, since the site lies over the CCA aquifer district and North Highlands Fire Department.
Okay. Okay. Adam, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Board members' questions on this application? Do you want to give us the, the highlights of the project, maybe? Or is that not, you're not...
I mean, there's nothing to add from, since, since last month. I mean, there is one thing that I wanted to address that was, that was, that was brought up at the last, at last month's meeting, which was the hours of operation. So the, the, the current hours of operation... So, the, the current hours of operation are seven o'clock, seven AM to six PM on Monday through Friday. Saturday is seven AM to three PM. We just want to change everything one half hour earlier. So, six-thirty to five-thirty on the weekdays and six-thirty to two-thirty on Saturday. The issue, I believe, arose with regard to the timing of the trucks returning, which we had anticipated being from three to three-thirty, but there's still other activities going on that he wants to conduct from, from, from the time the trucks get back to the, the end of the day. So, I mean, the, the plant closes at three, that's why, or three-thirty? Yeah, the, the four o'clock, so, but he, he still wants to conduct activities on the site. That's why we're, that's why we're still proposing use of the property until, until five-thirty. So, it's, 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 it's six-thirty to, to five-thirty is the proposed, generally the proposed hours of operation.
Dennis, please. On your statement of use under the hours of operation, you're saying six AM to three-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, and six-thirty on Saturday to noon. And I just want to clarify that also. There's a comment about it's going to be all done by in-house drivers with the exception of the occasional other contractors going there picking up material, taking it to their sites and such. Are they going to be complying with those same hours, would be my question?
No, what, what my plan is-
Sir.
So, the plan is that the trucks would just start up and leave at six-thirty in the morning.
Our trucks would start up and leave at six-thirty in the morning and just leave the site. As far as, we don't, we're not a retail, so we wouldn't, it would be a subcontractor of ours coming in on site, yeah. But any screening operation, any screening wouldn't start, we would consider starting that at nine AM till three P, four PM. It's just the trucks just leaving because we, we're a contracted trucker for Thale Industries, so they usually want us in there by quarter, seven, seven AM. So, it's just them leaving the yard. There would be no other activity there until-
But it does say six.
Yeah, that must be a tight part.
Where are you saying six? Under hours of operation, second paragraph, last line.
Well, I was, I was just stating the hours of operation of the quarry. That's not of the site. That's not of the site, that's of the quarry. That's just referencing the hours of the quarry.
Okay, but then I guess the confusion on my part was with whom RKB has holding contracts on, it took it, that was your time there.
Yeah, it would be six-thirty.
And that would comply, would those timeframes still comply with your contractors that are coming in, subcontractors?
Well, they wouldn't be coming in and I, I wouldn't allow anybody coming, we're not picking up material. So, what we would do is if, we, we process our own soils, we make engineered soils and rooftop soils and stuff. So, we would load them in the afternoon on the trucks so that the trucks can just start up and leave. We wouldn't be running any loader or anything like that in the morning.
If you had another contractor coming in-
We usually don't use contractors for soil deliveries or anything. It would be just like trucking, like, to meet it, they usually just, they wouldn't even be coming in our yard. They would usually just work for us and meet us at the quarry. So, it would be rare if they were helping us with a delivery in the middle of the day or something like that, but most of our stuff would be preloaded in the afternoon and they would just start up in the morning and leave.
Because it, it does state, and maybe I misunderstood it, less frequently material will be sold and taken from the site by another contractor.
Dennis, just to be clear, I, I don't, this is what he's doing, I don't want to change what was, I don't want to change what was originally approved.
I just wanted to make sure that all of a sudden you don't get a contractor coming in and all of a sudden, well, I want to, I want to get a jump on the day, I want to be there at five o'clock, five-thirty and-
No, no.
I, I don't want him to lose, I don't want him to lose a pre-existing non-conformity. So, I don't, so I didn't, so whatever he, whatever he's doing, whatever he's approved to do now, that's what I want him to be able to keep doing.
I just, again, it was just for clarity because of the way it's written, so.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I mean, look, just to be clear, I don't think we're approving anything tonight. We're just hearing what you're proposing, including the hours of operation. Just want to be clear, we're just, it seemed like there's a lot of movement to say we're, so we're just, we're just, we heard you, we've got some declarations. Questions? No? Good? Good? Okay, so let's, motion to declare this a major project, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. I'd like to declare this an undeclared action. Say undeclare it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second. Laura again, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Do we need to declare an uncoordinated review?
Yes, you should.
Okay, well, I have a motion to be uncoordinated with this review. Thank you, Laura. Second.
I'll second.
Joe, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, and then Cheryl, I ask you to make a number of referrals to, I'll do as a collection, fire, planning, health, and conservation. May I have a blanket motion for those referrals, please? Thank you, Neil. Second, Laura. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Site visit, who would like to do a site visit? Everyone would like to do a site visit. Take out your calendars. What is the next best date, Cheryl?
Eleven-five or eleven-twelve.
To ensure noticing, it would be the twelfth, right?
The fifth.
The fifth, sorry? The fifth, uh, okay, I, okay, fifth?
I will not be able to attend.
What?
Come on, Ron.
What?
I'm in Florida.
Ridiculous. Well, do you, I mean, would you like to be there?
No, no, no need for me. I'll, I'll resolve my issues separately from you. You'll see my comments.
Okay.
Of any site visit.
How was November fifth for everyone?
I'm good.
Good? Anyone, yeah? Enough quorum? Great. November fifth, what?
The clocks do change that day.
Okay, the clocks change. Did that get pushed out? I remember being in October, that used to be done.
Yeah, it used to be.
Hmm, interesting. The earth must be doing something strange. Okay, November fifth, nine-thirty motion.
Okay, three months.
Thank you, Peter. Second. Joe, thank you. All in favor for November fifth, nine-thirty AM. Good? Good? Okay, great. And as you know, many years ago, one of our former board members, when she had the property in Horson's Trail, she brought us cooked lamb as a snack. It was the only time I think we ever got some that delicious, so the once, we got donuts from, forgot who that was. Someone had donuts, so don't, you know-
Don't forget the coffee.
The bribes are totally acceptable. Just kidding, I'm just, I'm actually just joking around. Please do not do anything. We'll see you at nine-thirty AM on Horson's Trail on that date. Nine-thirty, yeah, nine-thirty. All right, great. Site visit, all right, anything else on this one, Ron?
No, they covered it.
Now, they got a lot of commentary, me asking for a lamb, okay. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. That was a weird, I think they just slaughtered the lamb the night before, it was a little weird, but, okay. She was a good board member. All right, Korniski, Kornicki, Krasnicki.
Was that Mary Ellen Finger?
Mary Ellen Finger, yes, yes. Were you on the board then? I don't think so.
I had just gotten on when she was starting to, not beyond, she was starting to miss a lot of, a lot of meetings.
Oh, yeah.
I, I knew her.
Yeah.
I knew, you know, Dave Vick, who's standing in Aggie.
Oh, right, right. He's still in town? All right, sir, the floor is yours.
Very good. Good evening. Adam Thieberg, Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture PC, here representing the applicant, Krasnicki Plaza LLC. I'm also joined by the applicant himself, Tim Krasnicki. The applicant is proposing a ninety-five-hundred square foot split level building at thirty-six, twenty-six Route Nine, which is in the HC zone located at the corner of East Mountain Road and Route Nine. The building would house the applicant's two existing businesses, Quality Fence and Byright Fuel.
And by, and what?
Byright Fuel, thank you. The ninety-five-hundred square feet of the building would be broken into approximately thirty-six-hundred square feet of office space and approximately fifty-nine-hundred square feet of warehouse storage. There's also proposed nine-thousand square feet of outdoor storage area behind the proposed building. There are three thirty-thousand gallon heating oil storage tanks proposed and a twenty-five foot by twenty-seven foot loading canopy for the fueling operation. Associated with the development will be landscaping, required parking, septic system, new drilled well, and stormwater management practices. The site will be accessed by Route Nine only. A site meeting's already been held with the New York State DOT, which, at which the location of the driveway along the frontage on Route Nine was discussed, and so that's why it's in the location where it's shown. In an earl, I, I will say, in an earlier concept, there was an access shown to East Mountain Road, but at the recommendation of your town engineer, that access has been eliminated from the plan. In place of the through drive that would have connected the access at Route Nine to East Mountain Road, we've included a circle at the end of the driveway to accommodate vehicles turning around on site. So, we've received Ron's comment memo and will be working on responses to those right away. Tonight, we're hoping to go through some of the procedural steps that were outlined in Ron's memo and answer any preliminary questions that you might have.
Anything, that's your brief, that's the end of it? You want, anything else you want to share? No? Okay, Ron?
The applicant indicates it's a proposed fuel business that's going to be at the southeast corner of East Mountain Road North and Route Nine. It's immediately north of the Dane Lumber site plan that the board had more recently approved. And so, there's a variety of issues that you, you want to consider and understand. The intersection of South Mountain Pass, or, I'm sorry, East Mountain North Pass is, has been a significant concern of the board for a variety of projects. As the applicant indicates, we had frowned upon a proposed access onto East Mountain Road North that's now been accommodated in the design, but it's still a very significant activity in that, in that area. So, it's going to warrant the board's close attention. There's two separate businesses being proposed, fencing business and this fuel oil business. There's three separate thirty-thousand gallon fuel tanks that are proposed on the site in the rear, so the visual aesthetic concerns warrant close consideration. And as the applicant indicates, at the first meeting, you typically address the preliminary administrative things to do, and those always involve classifying the project, identifying it or typing it as a secret action, and then making necessary referrals. So, if the board understands the intent of the project, you might want to move those things forward and put it on the agenda for a site inspection so you can better understand the impacts that this project might have in the area.
Okay, Adam, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Board members' questions? Sir, Dennis.
So, I'm assuming this is your map here?
Yes.
And in the upper right-hand corner are the three tanks? Okay, those, and where is Clove Creek relative to those tanks?
The creek is on the opposite side of East Mountain Road. Here, it should be noted that there is a water course buffer and the entirety of the development and the disturbance associated with it is outside of that buffer. So, this line here represents that water course buffer, which is one hundred feet away from the water course itself, which again is on the other side of East Mountain Road.
Is in Clove's Creek, Clove Creek, the other side of Route Nine at that location? Because that, that stream comes down from the Beacon Reservoir.
It could well be, we'll take a look at the mapping. There, there is, there is a water course in this location.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll check on the naming.
I have a question. What's the height of the tanks?
Those are thirty-five feet.
Last time I checked it.
That's the tallest.
Yes.
Okay. There's a, there's a detail showing in, I know it's a boilerplate detail, but it shows two tanks at one height and a third tank higher?
No, that's just, that, that, yeah, that was, those were just spec sheet from the manufacturer itself.
Yeah, I realize that.
So, I do have it here. That spec sheet, is it here somewhere?
It's right here.
Oh, it's right here, okay. Yeah, it's more so the dotted outline here, the three different tanks, I think it's just like a watermark from the manufacturer, but this right here is the actual spec sheet, this dotted line that's more in the bottom left.
So, the three tanks-
It's kind of deceiving, yeah.
Are the same size? Is that what you're indicating?
The three tanks in the back is just a watermark from the manufacturer.
The three tanks that you're proposing-
Correct.
Are this configuration?
Yes, yes.
And the height of that again, I'm sorry?
Thirty-five. I'll, yeah, I'll double, I'll double check that, but it should be, it's in that realm.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. The, the location of the AST, the above-ground storage tanks in the top corner there, is there going to be any secondary containment or any kind of buffer around that?
I'm going to let the applicant speak to that.
So, the tanks that are proposed are, it's called, it's a double containment is what, is what it's called. So, basically, a single wall, so it's a double, a single wall versus double wall. So, we're proposing a double wall tank, or three double-walled tanks. So, within the first wall, there's, there's two walls within the containment of this system. So, instead of having to have like outside containment, like physically outside of the tanks, within the tank, the containment is built within the tank. So, you have the actual tank that houses the twenty-nine-thousand gallons plus minus within, and then there's also a secondary outer shell that is sealed so that if anything were to happen on the inside, that it just flows right outside into this, into that secondary containment that's built in.
And what about the feed, the feed pipes, return pipes, are they going to be secondary contained to? Is everything going to be-
I, we could look into the actual, we haven't gotten onto the actual pipes themselves, yeah, but more so the tanks where they're being concerned, but the pipes could always just double check all that.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so just, this is, just to clarify, I have a couple. This is, this is oil. You're selling oil, retail or wholesale?
Number two diesel, it's number two diesel, so all for a diesel that goes into-
You're speaking very fast and you need to be the mic.
So, yeah, number, number two diesel, so that goes into home heating for homes, basically.
And showing this retail or wholesale?
This would, this would be wholesale, so our trucks would be using these tanks.
You, tank, tank fills a truck you own and then it goes to someone's house?
Correct, exactly.
Okay. So, I want you to make a statement. This is a corner, I think, I think Ron stated this, I'm going to restate it. This is a corner that we have now approved. I mean, Mr. Insight here has been here a number of times, he's got this marking, he's got this monopoly on this one part of town in doing work. It seems like he's created quite the, the business for himself on monitoring these size large projects in this area. We, as a board, have gone before our town board to talk about Route Nine traffic. We have yet another business who wants to have large trucks coming in and out egress off of Route Nine with a large business. It's not that this is not a corridor already for this, and it's certainly illegal to do it, but I'm telling you, we have spent an enormous amount of time, this literal spot, just the property, just to the east of it, discussing this very, these very topics when we had even a gardening business that wanted to go in there and when his other project, maybe that's why you hired him, because he just dealt with this issue not that far away from it. So, I'm just telling you that there's going to be noise with the public. We've already gotten the letter, which you may have received already. Commenting, I guarantee that will not be the first commenting on this topic. There are a lot of residential homes up East Round Road North. I will tell you, since you don't know this board or me, we try very hard to balance property rights and community rights. That is what we understand to be our job effectively, but this is tough because this is not an, this is not an easy question. And we will be discussing these very topics of Route Nine traffic and trucks and this intersection and this corner. So, last question, do you own this property at this point? Okay. All right, I just want to understand where, where we're going from then.
I've watched numerous amounts of planning board meeting videos. I've watched numerous amounts of planning board meeting videos.
Then you're familiar with?
I've become very familiar with almost all of it, yes.
Well, I have, I have some lines you'll hear many times, are very repetitive with my same lines, so I look forward to working with you. Ron, remind us of the referrals we have to make.
Sure. As I said, first, you want to declare it a major site plan. The referrals themselves are going to go to county planning, to DOT, Department of Health for new water and septic, and again, the conservation board, because again, the CCA overlay district falls underneath the property. And as I, as I also mentioned before, you typically make referral to North Highland Fire Department.
And what about SEACRA and coordinated, uncoordinated? Uncoordinated?
Again, the, I think the significance of the project, we've just identified the variety of outside agencies that require referrals, it would be appropriate, one, to declare it an unlisted action, but also then to have coordinated environmental review done with all those outside agencies.
Uncoordinated.
Coordinated.
Uncoordinated, all right.
Yeah.
All right, we can have a motion for a major project, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Joe, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. And a unlisted action, may I have a motion, please? Thank you, Neil, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Can I have a motion for a coordinated review? Thank you, Laura.
Second.
Thank you, Peter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And then five referrals, we get the treat of the DOT referral this time, how exciting that's going to be for you guys. Again, you're quite the expert in that at this point, so I'll repeat, the referrals are for Cheryl, for county planning, fire, conservation, county health, and the State Department of Transportation. May I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Laura, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Site visit, I'm going to suggest ten-thirty on that same day that we, now we're just bundling them up, hold on a sec. And that is, the fifth, yes? So ten-thirty, are you okay being second? Correct.
And anything you can stake out, anything you can give us for visuals, stake out the corners of the building, give us, give us, hang on, hang on, stake out the corners of the building, give us, you know, give, if you can, give us a story pole or a balloon or something to look at, so we know how high these tanks are going to be, give us the footprint of the tanks, give us some visual support.
Just so the board's prepared, the site is fairly densely filled, you know, with brush and it's wooded, so it's not an open site that we're just going to be able to stroll out on and see, you know?
Why don't you just hug some trees with some, something?
Give us something, give us something, so we're not just walking around the woods, yeah. Or market, you know, give us some idea what we're going to be looking at.
Very good.
Bring machete.
Okay, any further, any new business for the board? Anything else for me, sir?
I think we covered it, thank you.
Okay, any new business for the board? Hearing none, motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second. All right, see you all in November, thank you very much, good night.